Good evening, welcome to this regular meeting for Tuesday, March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Everybody please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which sustains us, in which we stand, under God, in this call.
Walk tall, please. Mr. Grigsby here. Mr. Haynes here. This is McCarthy.
Here.
This is Saxon.
Here.
Mr. Vakas here. Finalization of the agenda. Is there anything to add or remove?
The agenda is final, it's presented.
Thank you. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the written summary of the regular minutes for the meetings on February sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, and February twentieth.
Both. Okay.
Move on to Saxon, second by Miss McCarthy. Any discussion? Walk tall, please. This is Saxon.
Yes.
This is McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby, yes. Mr. Haynes?
Yes.
Mr. Vakas, yes. Moving on to superintendent, treasurer.
We have a very exciting report tonight. Now, we are going to begin with our students and staff of the month. I would ask, though, that at the end of the presentation for our staff students, if you can hang around, we'd like to get a photo before you leave and say, look, stop. So with that being said, I would like to welcome to the podium Ms. Andrea Vance from BCLC.
Good evening, everyone. I have the pleasure tonight of introducing our students of the month. Our first student of the month is going to be joining us, hopefully. It's going to be a Zoom tonight because he has a little bit of a cold. But I have the pleasure of introducing Peyton Riliano. And Peyton is in Mrs. Crigger's classroom in our preschool.
Yeah.
And Mrs. Crigger says that Peyton is always happy and ready to come to school each day. He enjoys learning and helping his teachers and is always ready to participate and try new things. So congratulations to Peyton. And next I have with me Cohen Vitora. She's a nice boy. There you go. Cohen is, um, he's in Mrs. Bublannick's kindergarten classroom. And Mrs. Bublannick says that Cohen is an amazing student. He strives to do his best in all his academic areas, going above and beyond of what is expected in the classroom. He is consistently following the rules and listens to directions. Cohen is a great friend to others and always has a smile on his face. Uh, Cohen is Ranger Strong and exhibits that every day. Congratulations to Cohen. Now I'd like to introduce, um, Mrs. Stefan Tcheky from Liberty.
I am very excited to announce our student of the month for Liberty in first grade. It is Rita Thorey. Rita's in Ms. Sherdell's, um, first grade class, and he was nominated because he is such a great role model for their class. He comes in every day with an interesting story and a positive attitude. Rita is kind to everyone, always willing to help out whenever she can, and always gives one hundred percent of effort in all of his work. We are so lucky that Rita's part of the B seven family. Way to go, Rita. And our second grade student of the month is Leah Seviah, and she's in Ms. Seifah's second grade class. Leah is a student we can always count on for her honesty. She not only always tells the truth, but she loves to give her honest opinion. Although honesty is our character trait this month, Leah also has earned student of the month for her positive attitude, willingness to work hard, and determination when learning new topics. She volunteers and always shares her ideas in class. We are very excited to continue to see Leah's success this year. Congratulations. I will invite up Mr. Sullivan for the half-dead.
One thing, Mr. Sullivan, right now do we have? Is write-ups? I can read them if we have them. Or maybe we'll see if.
We'll move on to Mr. Tcheky from.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm very honored to be here tonight. I have two learners that I'm going to be recognizing. So first I'm going to recognize, Damon Zhang. Damon, can you come up? Thank you. This is Damon, and Damon was nominated by Coach DeFranco. And this is what Coach DeFranco had to say about Damon. Damon shows all the qualities of Ranger Strong. But I am very impressed this month with his teamwork. He really made an effort to help others in need and share his knowledge of art. Damon is patient and kind toward all peers, and it is great to have Damon in art and part of our HCA. Keep it up. And then unfortunately, Ayla was not able to be with us tonight, but Ayla Yost was nominated by her coaches. Um, and this is what Coach Voiki had to say about Ayla. Ayla exemplifies the traits of Ranger Strong on a daily basis. She works hard in every class. During the month of March, we celebrated Kindness Week. When learners were asked to identify a learner who demonstrates kindness, many of the learners identified Ayla as a student who exemplifies this trait. One learner stated, "Ayla is very kind every day. She is polite. She is also selfless, and I think she deserves a reward." Another stated, "She is always being respectful and is always on task and is always being nice." This is a true testament to Ayla's character and kindness. And Ayla, if you're watching, thank you for always making the right choice and being kind to everyone. Thank you. I would like to invite up Mr. Mueller from the high school.
Good evening. Happy election day. I hope everyone had a chance to participate in the democratic process today. And go Rangers. So this is our last time together for students of the month. For those below the high school level, you will have many more opportunities. For members of the class of two thousand and twenty-four, this is my last chance as principal to recognize some of the many outstanding seniors that, um, this community sends to our high school every day. So this month, um, we're going to recognize four, two of whom are not here. But that's not why we're doing four, because the other two couldn't show up, because they're all worthy, and I just lost all their information. Good, we got it. So, um, it's been my plan, as I got to know our seniors over the course of the last two years, said, man, what's the right time for me to recognize these two students? I thought the last one of the, last one of the year. But they can't come tonight because they're involved in our musical Beauty and the Beast. But it's my pleasure and honor to recognize Max and Rose Saxonhausen. And you may know that their mom, Marcy Saxon, is on our Board of Education. I'm not rec, I'm not recognizing them because of that fact, although that's pretty cool. I'm recognizing them because they are outstanding in every regard. They, they participate in high school life fully. That's Max. Let me tell you about Max. Max is a, is a member of the marching band, which he loves. Student council, class officers, drama club, National Honor Society, Leo Club, that's the Lions Club Junior, ACES Academic Challenge, which was on WOL last night, and we won. Jazz Band, Key Club, were they also not like Rotary Student of the Month? We didn't put that on here. In addition to everything else. And they carry themselves in a way that every family in this community would be proud of, just like everyone we're going to recognize does. So that's Max Saxonhausen. His sister, his twin, Rose Saxonhausen, is the same, like the flip side of Max. National Honor Society, Key Club, Drama Club, Prom Committee, Leo Club, Marching Band, Rotary Student of the Month, favorite class AP Psychology, favorite hobby playing clarinet, Dream College Miami University, and her dream job, an entertainment lawyer. So she got a little bit of E.T. drama in there. And I'm going to tell you about Rose. You would never pick her out, and then all of a sudden, last year, our musical is Little Shop of Horrors, and she plays this jazzy part. My jaw dropped. She's got it in her. And I'm proud to recognize both, um, Max and Rose Saxonhausen as seniors of the month. Hope we give them a round of applause. I really love it. Two other seniors who are here, who are also role models. Um, come on up, guys. I present to you both Jessica Haney and Griffin Terre, in the flesh. Two outstanding role models and leaders in the class of two thousand and twenty-four. Let's start with Jessica. If you've come to our, she's a cheerleader. She's a gymnast, varsity hour champion for life, student council, prom committee, uh, and I watch your stuff, so I'm just winging this. And every time we scored this fall, if you saw that Dynamo running, carrying the Ranger flag, cheering our touchdowns, that's this one. She is a leader. She is a, she is a take-charge, dynamic member of the class of two thousand and twenty-four. She loves her school. She loves her family. She loves her class. We are so proud of Jessica. I don't know who's next in, in the class of two thousand and twenty-five, but they have got huge shoes to fill. Jessica Haney. Griffin Terre. Griffin is a star basketball player at North Ridgeville High School. He is recognized as a leader. He's recognized not only in North Ridgeville High School, but around the region and across the state for his ability as a basketball player. Where's your, where's your, where's your current school, by the way, I'll have to say? And she wants to be a travel nurse. Anyway, back to Griffin. Because, because Griffin is signed, Griffin wants to play D-two basketball with the ultimate goal of being an NBA player. He is signed and committed to play at Lake Erie College for the Lake Erie Storm after graduation from North Ridgeville High School. But here's why I nominated Griffin. In addition to, like every other one of these kids, his great family, Griffin is one of the most respectful young men you will ever meet. Yes, sir. No, sir. Will do. Can do. I've got it. Remember the National Honor Society. What else you got, Griff? Varsity R, Varsity R C. Got a bunch of stuff. And when he is on campus, which is every day, Griffin's about business. Both of these leaders are being recognized tonight. They will finish out the week. They will return from their spring break of their senior year, and in the last eight weeks of their high school career as North Ridgeville Rangers, they will finish in the same proud fashion that they have conducted themselves throughout their, not only high school career, but their educational career, I'm sure. So congratulations, guys. Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Sullivan apologized for his unexpected absence this evening, so I certainly can't, um, do these four students justice from NREC, but I do want to recognize them. I will say this, um, we have two thousand students in this building. So for these four students to be nominated, uh, by their teachers and professors in the building, speak to the wonderful things that they have done here. Um, Mr. Sullivan has promised too that he will follow up with their write-ups so that the board knows exactly why they were nominated and share those with the parents as well. But I would like to take the opportunity to introduce them. They are in grade four, Cecilia Bardot. Grade five, Charlotte Geiger. And grade six, Landon Schifferstein. And let's see, our grade eight is Braden Summons. So congratulations to all of our winners, um, especially those in the class of two thousand and twenty-four. It's a special time for our seniors. Um, I always think it's really nice too that our young students get to see, um, you know, what they will soon become because it goes so fast, but, um, my job this evening is on behalf of the Board of Education. It is, uh, my pleasure to congratulate two staff members of the month, um, for March. Our first, uh, winner this evening is Mrs. Cassie Trista. All right. Cassie is one of our secretaries here in NREC. She was hired in August of two thousand and twenty-two. Um, I would tell you, she came to us, we stole her from the medical field. So after COVID, she was looking for, you know, a change, and I knew that as soon as I interviewed her that I wanted her to be a member of our team, and it's been a, a, a great decision of the team to bring her on board, uh, but it was not me that nominated her, so, um, two of her colleagues had this to share. Cassie is an integral part of our team. She is organized, efficient, and provides great customer service to our families. She does not get overwhelmed and handles every situation professionally and with a smile. Another nominator added this. Cassie has done a great job as one of the secretaries at NREC. She is very helpful and always has a smile on her face. She does a great job of communicating important information and keeping everything organized while working in a busy main office setting. Congratulations, Cassie, and thank you for being such a positive and valuable team up here. Our second employee this evening is Senora Filada. Since Filada is one of our Spanish teachers at the high school. Um, she has worked here in the North Ridgeville City Schools since two thousand and one. Um, and before, you know, joining us, she has studied in Spain, pursued a master's degree, and is currently teaching Powell's credit course, um, classes for us. Um, it was nice, uh, this is, uh, Senora's last year with us, as she is retiring, um, from the North Ridgeville City Schools, but I thought it was great because it's always nice when we have students that nominate staff. And so in this case, uh, we had a student share this. I believe Mrs. Filada very much deserves to be staff member of the month because she has made me comfortable in her classroom by establishing such a positive classroom culture. Mrs. Filada's Spanish II class is the class that I look forward to going to every day. She's very engaging and definitely loves her job. This is her last year teaching, as she will be retiring, but she will definitely be missed by all. Congratulations, Maria, and thank you for the care that you show our students, families, and your colleagues, and for all of your service, uh, to the North Ridgeville City Schools. I would just like to thank all of our parents, um, staff, and our students this time for nominating, uh, staff members of the month. All of your kind words are, are important to share, and so I thank you for that.
If we can, if we can have all the students of the month come on up for a photo.
Guys, thanks, thanks, guys, thanks, guys.
I can send, I can share pictures with you guys. It'll be on the website.
Yeah, next presentation is actually going to be a very exciting presentation. For the past few years, we have been extremely fortunate to have added, uh, American Sign Language, an additional language to our high school. Um, and the program began extremely strong and has maintained, uh, that strength throughout, uh, matriculation through ASL one, and we're now able to offer our upper-level, um, ASL courses. So tonight with us are some of our students and Ms. Sevaco, who are here to, uh, share with us one of their most recent experiences. We share a little bit with the board and our audience about the great things that they're doing in American Sign Language.
Good evening, everyone, and board, thank you for allowing us to have this time with, with you guys and sharing what we experienced. I can honestly say this was the best trip. I have, this was my first, and I can't imagine any trips. Um, I can't imagine any trip ever being any better. The students were given five charms to start their trip, and every day they were given these five charms, and if they lost a charm, it was because they spoke, and their feet were off the bus. Your students, we had twelve from North Ridgeville, were off the charts. My boss kept saying, "Are you sure they're signing? Are you sure they're having a good time? Are you sure?" I said, "Yes." They signed for ten hours, voice-off the entire time, never spoke a single word. They were so. And I believe, they, they even stole the teacher's charms. They caught us talking more than we caught them talking. We are very, very proud of them, but I wanted to tell you their shirts say, "Inspire," and I honestly feel this, this could not have been a better shirt for them to have, and we wore it the trip because they inspired me and got me excited and encouraged me to be the teacher that I need to be, just because you have raised such amazing students the way they are. Um, these students absolutely are the top in the cream of the crop. Um, all twelve of them are, but as you can know, they're all busy with sports and Beauty and the Beast and everything else. They, um, they are in our video, but I'm going to let them share what they're going to sign to, and I'm going to try to voice. It's very difficult for a hearing person to hear what's being voiced of what they're signing, so bear with them. They're also very nervous. So Austin, if you want to go first, and then we, they each shared the slide of what their pictures say, uh, or what their picture is, their most favorite picture, so if you go next. My name is Austin. My favorite part of the DC is the beautiful area. We went to the deaf area. There are three places that we went to. The Maseria, which is a pizza place. Gadiette University, and the deaf Starbucks. It was amazing. My favorite part was going to the deaf area. All three of them were amazing. It was perfect. Sorry, we don't clap and it's all. This is Ruby, by the way. She's very. I tri, and when we traveled, I met lots of fun. I had a lot of fun and met some friends. I learned so much of the language. It's really hard. And got to learn more about the deaf culture. And this is Quincy. When we traveled, we really enjoyed it. Nerds get the best of us, but it didn't bother them on the trip because they were with their friend. Her confidence in signing grew tremendously, and that was the one thing we noticed, is their skills exploded because they didn't know how much they really could do until they were forced to do it, and they were, they were all shocked. I'm sure all of us could say that equally. And we've got Nick. My name is Nick. My favorite part was of the travel, or the trip, was signing with people. It's gone. And learning how to sign, all the culture. And this is Maya. My favorite part of the trip was going to the university. The university was, it's the only four-year liberal arts college for the deaf, and we were able to take a tour and see all the different things that they've been learning all along in the deaf history and the deaf culture in class, and now they got to put, put buildings to it, and it was just absolutely amazing. We did produce, um, the kids created a video slides, but I don't want to take your guys' time. You have a lot of important things to do. The rest of the students that went all created a video for you, and they are all captioned, um, somewhere on the slide. So for those that are, um, clueless on signs, you'll still know what I'm saying. I promise, I did, I did view it, and they did sign what's said on the slide, so. But I just wanted to thank you from the bottom of my heart for allowing us to take this trip. Um, we're already looking at how we can expand it and include so many other, other, we learned a lot in this trip and what we can add and change to make better for next year. A lot of the kids are already sent. I'm so excited. I can't wait to go, so. Thank you for being a willing board and allowing us to, to learn in a new environment. Thank you.
Hey, and our final brief for this evening, I would like to introduce Mrs. Eva Booster, coordinator.
coordinator, we can be partnerships and student opportunities. I was going to talk a little bit to you about some of those opportunities that have been made available to our students through some institutions and I am aware of Miss Armbruster.
Thank you very much for giving me the time. It is so amazing, all the awesome things. That's just another indication of the things that are happening at the high school. And it's hard to talk about all of them because we do, what Joe said, have amazing kids and the opportunities for our students. And, and these are some more of them, which thank you for letting us through all these and supporting us. So I wanted to just kind of overview Ranger Academy is one of the, the main parts of my job. And, and we've talked about this before, but this is where we really are trying to meet those students that are, that are not on the, the typical pathway to graduation and supporting them to get there, you know? And, and we meet them where they, where they need to be met. And we are continuing to do that. We offer social and emotional support. We've expanded our career exploration this year, which I'll talk about in a couple of slides. Goodwill Industries, we partner with them annually and they do great things for our students. Get them prepared for the workforce. We've, we've created a new partnership with the Department of Job and Family Services. And their CCMEP programs, some of our students are qualified and the ones that are graduating, turning 18 and giving them some support as they go out on their own, which is a fabulous program. They're, they're understaffed, but they're helping us by the numbers. I think it's kind of cool to see last year about 450 students, classes were passed, 223 credits. And we're kind of on track for that. We have 400, I think that's 480 enrolled right now. And we've about 180 passed. Should have more right now at the quarter, but they're all like at 95%. And then the last quarter, they'll really come through and we'll get, get those credits earned. We're still doing our after-school credit recovery for those students that can't fit. They're not in Ranger, can't fit in their schedule. We're doing eighth grade science enrichment for our students to take physical science for the standards that they, they might not get in the physical science from the eighth grade curriculum. And then when needed, we can use the Apex Learning System for enrichment or for intervention. So it's really working well in that. One, one piece I want to talk about is our industry-recognized credentials. As you know, students have to show competency in algebra and English to graduate. They take their tests the first time. If they're not successful, we provide intervention at the high school and then they take another, take it another time. And if they're not successful, some of them might be so close, we haven't taken a third. But the state has, you know, there's an alternate pathway to graduation now. So this is an industry credential and we have a couple of students. We got through the path with them last year and this week, the year we will have 14 students. This is Ranger staff working with the business department at the high school. We're doing a business credential. They, we use retail, National Retail Foundation industry curriculum. And we're combining that with, they have a retail industry class, retail industry fundamentals, a customer service and sales, a warehouse class. And then we also use a lead for change curriculum too. So we piecemeal those together, which with what works for the students, two or three of those four options. And that combined with the Ohio Means Jobs Certificate, they earn two seals and that is their alternative pathway. So this is growing. I'm really proud of our business department for taking it on and our Ranger teachers. They kind of self-taught theirself the curriculum to help work with the students. It's an online curriculum, but we also support them to get through it. So that's been a great addition to the Ranger program and a great alternative for all of our students that we really hope to expand. Career exploration, you know, this is so important for our students, the old, if you can't see it, you can't be it. So we need more and more opportunities for this. So the JBS, we are working with them. We have a, a teacher that comes into our eighth grade and has done career exploration classes with them, gone through all the clusters. He comes into each studio one day a week and pushes in. He's broadcast speakers in to share. He, he prompt, he prepared them all for the future fair last month. And he does the surveys and really helps them kind of get an understanding of what they want to be, what they want to do, the kind of house, those types of things. And it's been a, it's been a great, the kids have loved him, the staff has loved him, he's really kind of fit in. So we're on track to have him again next year, which is great. We've implemented piloting and we're going to pilot again next year, LCC Bridges to Success Program, where students can earn, senior students can earn a, they earn CCP credit for the, the SDA 103 and 105, which is those intro to colleges classes that everyone has to take, how to, how to find your way in college. But the cool thing about this program, they again do career surveys, those types of things that help. Their goal, LCC, of course, is to get students to commit to LCCC, but they don't have to. But we've also pulled these programs, they had different days. They have September at IT Day. We know IT, manufacturing, nursing are the three, three big, those jobs are in demand in Northeast Ohio. So they had days on all those programs and our Ranger kids were able to go. And we were also able to open those up to other students. So whether they were in the bridges or not, we were able to provide, provide opportunities for about 100 kids. So that was great. April 22nd, we are going to do a registration day for our students that are going to LCC and they get cake. And they really, you know, they get advanced notice and advanced support from LCC for being a part of this program, any other students. And then I think the next slide is the, oh, continuing career exploration. We did the Cleveland Clinic Experience again this year where six kids got to go to the Avon Cleveland Clinic and see what it's like, all the different careers in healthcare. And we're hopefully, I've been working with the ESC on the manufacturing day. And hopefully we'll be able to send a team to that, AJ Rose, careers in manufacturing. We're hoping to send a whole team of students to that, participate in that event. That's in May, we don't have the official flyer yet. So I'm hoping that works for us. And then the future fair with that, as you all know, this is our big career fair we have annually. Grades eight through 12 participate. And this year, which was really exciting, the history departments and the English, English departments incorporated it into their curriculum and had students really find a path and direction at the fair. Because it's a little overwhelming, we had over 100 participants at the fair this year. And I'm just so grateful to the agencies, the local agencies and go on to the next slide, that participate and support our kids. It just, it means so very much. And I, I, we did a survey at the end, these are our sponsors. Thank you to all of them that supported us with door prizes, with food for our vendors. And then I have some quotes on there, I'm not going to read them to you. But basically we did a survey for our, we had parents respond and we have a survey for the people that participated. And they just are so appreciative of the opportunity to meet with our students. The next slide shows the, we had, I just kind of broke it down in the different categories. We had contractors, we had a lot of union representatives, manufacturing and landscaping companies. Again, another quote about the thing, thanking us for, you know, giving them the time. And then the next slide shows that we had the finance, we had finance, insurance, retail services. And then our forces, of course, were, were all represented, represented. And then the colleges, of course, we have many higher education institutions. They're on the next slide. And it was really cool, one of my, oh, I'm sorry, government agencies. I was really pleased with this year, everyone in North Ridgeville City, last year, the fire department didn't come, or the police department did not come. But we had our SROs there, but the department didn't come. So they made the fire department, was there's no one got them all, they're being fired, please. And I kind of told them that, so that worked out well. And streets as well as parks and rec and a lot of, a lot of support from the area. We're working on some partnerships with the county of Lorain. We started a, an internship program this week. It took two weeks to get the student vetted, but in the IT department for Lorain County. And really excited about that, one at a time, it takes a while, which, which leads me to my last couple of slides. I had a comment from a parent, a parent emailed me, oh, healthcare, clearly that was, healthcare was huge. Jackie Vance was, was really impressed with the surgical tech program, which has really impressed me too. The surgical tech program is amazing, a student can go for a year and become a surgical tech. And, and you know, and the kids were really hanging out because the, both UH and Cleveland Clinic had that program there as well as LCC was theirs, showing them the education that they needed to get. And it's just kind of amazing though that a person after one year is going to go in there and be next to the doctor performing your surgery. That's what Jackie and I were kind of hard asleep. But it's cool and it's a great career. So that we loved. And then, like I said, all the colleges, I think there were about 45 colleges that came. And this quote was kind of my favorite. A parent emailed me and said, thank you very much for doing the future fair. Last year, their student went to the future fair and came home and was, just talked about Riddell. And, and the parents said, well, what are you going to do with Riddell? And he was, I don't know, but it's just so cool, mom, they make those helmets and all of that. And this year he went to the future fair, he went to Riddell and then he went to Youngstown State University and saw that they have a sports marketing program. And he's like, I really think I could get involved in sports and make a career out of it. And you know, it takes, it takes a lot of time for our students and a lot of visits to see these people. So that, that quote really made me happy. But I really appreciate the opportunity to provide these opportunities for students. They, they need, if they can't see it, they can't be it. And we need to help each student find their way to graduation and that's what we're doing. That's all I have, if anybody has any questions. But we're, keep going, get the graduation is, I don't know, 42 days away, I think. They'll all be there, hopefully.
Sir Bruster, thank you. The excitement, I mean, this is by far one of my favorite things to be put on. And the fact that our school recognizes each student has a different passion and a different career path that they're going to follow. And the opportunities that are afforded by the staff and then this fair showing them everything that's out there and here. And you went from Riddell to go, wait a minute, I can tie this to college. And I mean, it really is cool to watch it in action. So thank you.
Thank you.
Clearly something you have a passion for.
I do, I appreciate it. Thank you so much for the opportunity and keep going.
It was a great example, you know, students designing up the future. Right? I mean, that's what, that's what the goal is here. So thank you, keep up the good work and keep, you know, gaining those partners, which I know you're increasing every day. So that's appreciated, we appreciate it very much. Thank you.
I know some people, Leary Municipal Court that might like to get involved, so.
Well, we have victims out there. And we had some, the prosecutor's office was there, so definitely, please look down.
Thank you.
All right, here's an opportunity for, let's do announcements first.
Yeah, so a couple of announcements, just want to make sure everybody knows. State of North Ridgeville is this Thursday, just a couple of days away here at the academic center downstairs in the, I hate the name of it, but it's called the Cafeterium, so that's what I'll call it. It starts at 6:00 PM. Doors open at 5:30-ish, 5:45-ish, you know, get here before 6:00. Light refreshments will be served, it'll be a great time. Mayor Corcoran will be there, Superintendent Casario, and they're always fun to watch.
There will be door prizes, there will be some interactive opportunities for infants and we're excited. Thank you for mentioning it.
Yeah, of course, very exciting time. I also want to mention, Mr. Mueller mentioned it earlier, but the Drama Club has their spring musical this weekend. Opens on Friday night, closes on Sunday. I don't remember how much tickets are. Do you remember the stacks of $10? I don't know.
$12 for adults.
Thank you, Mr. Haynes, $12 for adults. Staff gets in for free with our ID. I mean, what kind of entertainment could you get for free? These two students are talented, so please come out and support them. That's nice.
Lions Club, they have something coming up that the community should know about so they can come out and support, yes?
Yeah, for sure. Lions Club of North Ridgeville is hosting a pancake breakfast on Saturday, April 6th, 7:00 AM to 10:00 AM. Again, downstairs in this building at the End Rack Cafeterium. $10 donation is requested and for every donation, you get a free pair of certified eclipse viewing glasses. So not the cheap kind that are going to ruin your eyes. The Lions Club are all about saving sight. So we have, while supplies last, we have terrible viewing glasses for. Yes, for every donation. Thank you, permission.
And Mr. Mueller's point as well, today is election day. This way I don't get myself in trouble for only mentioning it when we're on the ballot. There are other things out there that have nothing to do with North Ridgeville City schools. So you have till seven o'clock to get out and cast your vote. All right, here's an opportunity for hearing of the public. There's anybody in attendance this evening that would like to speak? Now's your chance. Just approach the podium, state your name and your address. See you in a while, we'll move on. All right, consent agenda is recommended to the Board of Education approve the consent agenda resolution as presented.
Move second.
Dr. Grigsby and Saxton? Do you want to start them? Roll call please.
Mr. Grigsby? Yes.
Mrs. Saxton?
Yes.
Mr. Haynes?
Yes.
Mrs. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Vaca?
Yes.
Finance report, Mr. McCarthy?
Thank you, Mr. Vaca. There's one item this evening on our financial reports. Let me see, it is recommended for the board to approve the resolution for the financial statements and reports for the month of February 2024. And I move this item in one reading.
Moved by Ms. McCarthy, second by Mr. Grigsby. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Mrs. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby?
Yes.
Mr. Haynes?
Yes.
Mrs. Saxton?
Yes.
Mr. Vaca?
Yes.
Human Resources Report, Mr. Haynes?
We have a few items to consider on the Human Resources Report. Two certified staff appointments, one supervisor appointment, two support staff adjustments, one non-represented support staff legal absence, one support staff legal absence, two support staff resignations. I move to approve the Human Resources item.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Haynes, second by Ms. McCarthy. Do you want any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Haynes?
Yes.
Mrs. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby?
Yes.
Mrs. Saxton?
Yes.
Mr. Vaca?
Yes.
All right, I could have the suspects come up.
One of the things that we wanted to start this year is an opportunity, we hire new staff every year and I thought it's really important to not only welcome our new staff members, but also to introduce them to the Board of Education and our community. And so from now until August, I'm sure we will get that many, you know, our, our hires. But I'm really excited tonight because the two staff members that we are hiring full-time have actually been with us for at least a couple of months and in one case for a full year. So without further ado, I would like to bring up Natalie Mitchell and Amanda Walsh. They're going to sign their contracts, so we're going to.
It's an official Ranger signing, right?
Yeah. This is pretty cool.
All right, so as they're signing, just a couple of things, they're both going to be at liberty. And they both are currently at liberty. So Natalie is in our self-contained, able classroom. She's been with us since January. She's a recent graduate of Ashland and she was an Avon High School graduate. So she is trading her purple and yellow for navy and gold to be with us. She's done a phenomenal job in the building and then that classroom and is very excited about all of the planning that is occurring for next year. We had asked them a few things because we're going to introduce them to her, to their new teammates. So we gave them a little bit of a questionnaire. And one of the words that she uses to describe herself is cheerful. And her favorite team, her favorite four teams, Cleveland Guardians. And what she said that it is her family that inspires her and she's very excited to be here. So congratulations. We have been grateful to have Amanda Walsh with us all year. Amanda has been a lead replacement since August. And so she came on board, she has some experience in Constellation, in the Constellation Schools, but came on as a lead replacement and has done a phenomenal job. The word that she uses to describe herself is kind, and I would agree. So when I read that, I was like, absolutely. You know, they both loved our chocolate, so that's a great thing. I, I agree with that as well. And I did, it was nice because when I was coming in here, I had asked, I had taken a look at her survey and I had seen that when she asked who inspires her, she said her twin. And then her twin was here with her tonight. So it was very nice to see and you know, thank you for supporting her. But it is a pleasure to have both of you with us and it's nice to introduce familiar faces who are Board of Education. Congratulations. All right, you got.
Share the speeches you prepared for.
Thank you, Mo. Welcome to the family officially.
Thank you.
Was recommended with Board of Education adjourn this regular meeting.
Move.
Second. Roll call please.
Mrs. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby?
Yes.
Mr. Haynes?
Yes.
Mrs. Saxton?
Yes.
Mr. Vaca?
Yes.